Good afternoon and welcome to a special Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for this Tuesday, September 26th. For introduction purposes, I'm Todd Wilchin. I am the Chair of the County Board this year. On my left, fellow Commissioners Jennifer Brinkman and Deb Shore. On my right, fellow Commissioner Roma Amundson. Vice Chair and Commissioner Bill Avery will not be joining us this evening. He had another commitment. Joining us from the County Clerk's Office is County Clerk Mr. Dan Nolte and Kelly Lundgren. From the County Board Office, we have Mr. Kerry Egan. Now, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please start the agenda?
The Compton Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall through the hearing room. Additional copy of our material to be discussed today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff. At the front of the hearing room, the material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.inny.gov. And we have one item on the agenda today, and that's a public hearing for Lancaster County Board of Equalization Property Evaluation Protest Process. I have five people signed in that want to testify, and when you come up after I call your name, I'll swear you in since this is a public hearing.
And before we get started, just one other housekeeping item. Those wishing to speak on items specific to the hearing are asked to do so when they're called by the County Clerk. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, and the time limits may be extended or reasonably decreased at the discretion of myself. With that, for first person wishing to testify...
First person signed in is Lavon Dillo.
Come on forward.
Is this where I'm to be?
Yep. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Afternoon.
All right. I am here, not especially for myself, but another person whose working hours are three to 11:00, and so that person could not be here today. So I would like to explain some of his problems. But I will start out by telling you a little bit about my own, and all I want to do is tell you that my home was built in 76. It has 1,200 square feet of room. It has 12,000 square lot. We have three bedrooms, kitchen, dining area, and living room, two small bathrooms, half basement, and two stall garage. No improvements, except a new roof when we need that. Now, if you keep that in mind, then I'm going to tell you about this other person's property, which is at... Do you want the address where the property is?
It's up to you. Yeah.
2410 Southwest 14th. Little area, very peaceful out there. This is a two-bedroom house with a one-stall garage built in 1976. It has 841 square feet of living space with a wet basement, requiring a large dehumidifier which runs pretty much about four months out of the year, three or four months, however, when we have a lot of humidity and stuff. Makes a big electric bill, which makes your utilities very expensive. He has three fans, ceiling fans, in the home. They aren't too much help. The lot is 60 by 70 or so with no alley, and four feet of that is considered city property because of no alley, and that's okay. The utilities have to be worked every once in a while. It has a pump which empties into the backyard, and it drains down into the neighbor's yard behind, which pools. That neighbor has never complained, so we're not talking about that, but this is what happens. The neighbor to the north's house also drains into that same alleyway down to the neighbor. I'm just telling you the condition of this house. It has some of the first manufactured vinyl siding on it, the siding that was about that, so it's been there a while. It's had no improvements on it while this person has owned it for about 12 years. I don't know before that, but I doubt very much if it's had anything done to it. It has two bedrooms, 12 by 10, 12 by 8, each with one window. The kitchen is original, which has the original cabinets, a sink, and a vinyl floor, which I'm sure has been in there since day one. The bathroom has the original bathtub and sink and original vinyl floor. Living room is small with a 42-inch casing used for the stairs leading to the basement. One small fireplace takes most of the room up of one wall and is not used because fireplaces take heat out rather than in unless you have a blower.
You have one minute remaining.
Okay. What I want to tell you is that the taxes on that, the house I'm just explaining as opposed to the one, the first one that I explained, the taxes on our house in 2016 was $2,279.38. The taxes on the house I just explained was $2,001,4190, which makes $137.48 difference. There's something wrong there. Now, we've been to a referee a couple of times, my husband and I. We quit going. This is years back because nothing was done. The person who owned this house has done the same thing, and the last referee said, "Oh, I'm sure that we can get something done for you." There's, you know, "Sounds like you're paying too much in taxes." We never did hear anything from that. So that's mainly what I'm trying to get across, is I don't know if the referees do not get the message to someone who does reevaluations or what the problem is, but there is a problem. And I think there probably are many other homes that have the same problem. So I'd like to hear if there's anything that can be done for this.
Well, I guess just to speak about the process, what happens, you originally get notified by the county assessor what their proposed valuation is. That's done in the spring. And then you, yeah, you are given the opportunity to appeal that to the Board of Equalization, which is the county board. We contract with Great Plains, and they coordinate what the referee process, which is out at the event center, which is what you went to. And so those referees, those cases are then reviewed by the individual that we contract with to coordinate the process. And then we have the Board of Equalization takes final action, which is a public meeting where we can take additional information. And then if you don't, we take final action, which is what we've already done.
Okay.
And then following that, you know, there's the last step, which is the appeal to the Tax Equalization Review Commission. And that's Turk, and that's the final, I mean, that's basically the entity that makes the final determination. But what I tell people all along, you know, that there's, that property is valued, you know, that's what property taxes are based on.
Yes.
It is the levy that uses that base to calculate how much you pay. But by state law, you know, the values of the properties have to be within a certain range, and residential. And so I guess my question, I mean, I guess, does that kind of explain the process?
It explains the process, but I'm wondering where the disconnection is that something isn't done when you compare my home to this other home. Why is there the same amount of taxes within $137 when we've got way more space, 1,200 square feet, 841 in the one that is, that I believe is overtaxed?
But it comes back to the value, and that's where, you know, is your property valued at what its market would pay for it? So, I mean, that's ultimately, you know, if you want to share that information, you don't need to, but that's ultimately the question, which is, what is your property valued at? What is the market value? And then, and how does that compare to what the assessors? Because what the referees and Turk, what they're looking for, any, you know, third-party alternative value that is proposed, I mean, that's ultimately what, you know, the referees look at, is they look at several different factors, and without, you know, having the specific information about your case, I mean, it makes it difficult to respond, but it comes back to, you know, market value. Is your property assessed at the market value or within a certain percentage?
Okay. When we moved here many years ago, we paid $49,000 for this house that we live in now. Well, every year, of course, the valuation has gone up. So I think when the house that I've explained here was bought, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $90,000. And when you compare the size of the homes to each other, there's no equal, there's nothing right about any of that.
Are they, are they in the same neighborhood? Are they on the same street? Are they in the same condition?
No.
Are they in the same school district? There's a lot of other factors that go in.
Okay, I'm up in the Belmont area. This is out in the southwest area. This is an old street out in the south area. Well, my house isn't new. It's 39 years old or 41 or something like that.
And all of those factors go into determining value. So in your case, you're just looking at the price and assuming that, that there should be...
No, I'm not.
...an equalization, but there's other factors that go into determining the value.
Well, I would like to have someone come and look at my house and then go out and look at that house, because you'd have a different feeling about the value or the taxes it's been. I can't see...
And we can do that.
...$179 difference in taxes for the two places. There's no reasoning in that whatsoever. Anyway...
I would just ask, you know, is your property value that's been proposed by the assessment, is it, is it close to market value?
Oh, it was raised up, and let me find it.
Right.
I have it here. I've got it. We got a raise of...
Right, the average raise in Lancaster County this last year was 12% market value because of different factors.
Okay. The increase on our property was $114,300, and the increase on the other property was $4,300. But, oh, I got the back page here. Last year, we paid taxes on $112,400. It's been revalued at $123,000, our home. The first one that I, or this, the second one that I was talking about.
But, so my question is, is your house worth $123,000?
My house, is my house worth $120,000?
Whatever it's assessed at. I mean, that's, again, that's the question.
Probably not.
Is based on state law.
It, it has been assessed by the insurance at about $160,000.
$160?
Pardon me?
That's replacement cost.
Was that $116 or $160?
$160.
Okay.
$160,000.
That's probably replacement plus contents.
Well, replacement, you know.
Okay. We appreciate the information.
It's a sore spot with me.
Yeah.
Are there any...
What I would do is recommend that you contact the county assessor's office and request that an assessor staff come out and review your property.
Well, maybe we can do that, but I thought that was what the referee system was for. I thought that was the thing that you went to and where your problems were looked at and possibly taken care of, so.
Yeah, that would be done, I would say, earlier in the, because there's the, you know, with the assessor's office, they're the ones that are responsible to do the onsite inspection.
Well, I don't know, there's, there's a, there's a hole someplace in the system.
Well, I said, I would encourage you to follow up with the assessor's office.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you for listening.
Absolutely. Mr. Clerk, please call my next name.
Next is Terry Rittenhouse.
Hi.
Need to swear in here? Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Okay, I'd like to expand on what this lady was saying right over here. Warren Buffett said, "If you have 100 houses, same upkeep in a town, same maintenance on your yard, and houses go up 12% a year, you actually don't know what your house is worth until you put it on the market." Okay? To answer that question she had. Okay, well, mine went up from $57,500 to $74,000. And I got an exhibit here, too, I'd like to show you, and my question is, why don't the referees have tools to do their job? They don't have any tools in front of them. They don't have a computer to look it up for the dispute or anything. My second question is, you go through the referee, and you go through the system like that, and you don't have any change, but then you pay $25 to the state equalization board with the same comps. You get a result. Why is that?
Well, the information that you provided, I mean, if it were identical...
Exactly, yeah, you have the, you'll present the exact same comps to the referee. No result, no change. You get a letter back, no change. But then you pay $25 to the state equalization board, and you have a change in your evaluation. Why is that?
Well, the process is different. The referee process is not identical to the Turk. There's a lot more information that's being presented at Turk. There is some...
No, this is, this is the same comp, sir. I mean, you have the exact same three comps.
What I'm telling you is that the Turk staff have a different, yeah, a different process. I mean, they have more tools to their disposal.
Could you explain the difference in the process to me?
Doug, would you want to, would you be able to address the difference between the Turk process and the referee process? Prepare to do that or not?
Or Tom.
Or Tom, either.
Doug Seer, Deputy County Attorney. The Turk process is a formalized process. The referee process is informal. The referees look at information that's not been marked and received as exhibits. They go on the basis of information that's been accumulated in public records. The most important point is probably that the evaluation process is a subjective process. It's a difference of opinion, what one person would value a property versus another, and like the gentleman pointed out, you don't really know what your property is worth until a willing seller sells it to a willing buyer, and there's an agreed-upon price. Whatever anybody else does prior to that time is basically an educated guess as to what a piece of property may be valued at. When it goes to Turk, either Ryan or Kayla would handle that property. There would be discovery that would be done. People would have a lot more information available to them than you would have at the referee stage, including a more in-depth analysis of the comps for a particular property.
Okay. Can I ask you a question, sir?
No, that, that's not the process here today. They're accepting information from their...
I just wanted information from the county attorney's office on the difference between the two processes. That was just for general information, not for questioning.
And I have an exhibit right here. Can you see this thing at all? Is that on there, right? Thank you. How's this show up?
Does it turn on?
I have it face up, by the way. Okay. I went to the county clerk and also to the county assessor with this issue here, and when they did the comps on my property, they had, I said, "Why is Comp 1, 815 Garden Street, Bennett, Nebraska, and Comp 2 is 815 Garden Street, Bennett, Nebraska?" And the valuations, as you see, are completely different on the same property. Well, they explained it to me, which wasn't really satisfactory to me at all. They said that the property was broken down, and, you know, like, the lot had, the property was on one lot, and then there's a vacant lot. So the other comp, the old comp, was the vacant lot. And I said, "Okay, I understand that process," but I said, "I have a question," and they couldn't answer this. I said, "How can a vacant lot have central air, central heating, two bedrooms, and a bathroom? Can you explain that to me?"
You have one minute remaining.
Okay, can you explain that, then?
I, that's not, I have no information about this property.
It's right here in black and white.
Yeah, I, I don't have enough information.
But they, they told me that, you know, that was a vacant lot with central air, central heating, two bedrooms, or two bedrooms and one bathroom, and I have two lots on my property, so that vacant lot of mine has central air, central heating, two bedrooms, and a bathroom?
Are the other comps on the sheet valid comps?
The third one is. It's another property in Bennett. It's a separate address, 620 Tyler Street, but the other two are the same address.
Commissioner Amundson.
I do have a question. Is your subject property, I can't see this very well, in Hickman?
Correct.
Okay, but they used comps from Bennett?
Correct, both the comps.
Okay, thank you.
Because they, the reason on that, they said to me, is that valuations in Lincoln tend to be higher than rural areas, so they did the town of Bennett, and I asked them, I said, "Why can't you do a comp with another house in Hickman?" And also, I, I just can't get an answer on why a vacant lot would have central air, central heating, two bedrooms, and a bathroom. It just seems kind of ridiculous.
And it may have been a clerical error.
It's not a clerical error, and on top of that, the one comp...
Then the property owner that owns this property would have an issue that they could bring forward.
And on top of that, the parcel...
You haven't heard from them, so I don't know.
Okay, on top of that, sir, the parcel ID did not show up in the computer for the county clerk or the county assessor's office. There was no such thing, no parcel ID number on one of the comps. And that's why I was wondering why they don't have tools for the referee to actually describe this and have it in their system so you can explain it to them.
But what you're showing right now, the calculations are done by the assessor's office.
Correct, sir.
And so the, the information that you bring forward, I mean, would be...
It's by the assessor.
...be an alternative value that you would be proposing. And so that's what the referee process is for.
But I still have not gotten an answer on how a vacant lot can have central air, central heating, two bedrooms, and a bath, and a restroom. I, I'd like somebody to explain that to me.
We can follow up with the county assessor's office.
They can't explain it to me either. I went there and the county clerk both.
No.
And this is in black and white. This is from the county assessor's office.
Oh, Commissioner Avery?
This is one of your comparables, right?
No, I have, Comp 1 is 815 Garden Street, Bennett, Nebraska. Comp 2 is 815 Garden Street, Bennett, Nebraska. Two addresses, as two separate comps, and the other one is 620 Tyler Street, Bennett, Nebraska. Third comp is separate. And they explained to me, like I say again, that the property was subdivided, and the house remained on, the property and house remained on one lot, and it was subdivided to a vacant lot on the other property. And I just have not gotten an answer on how a vacant lot can have central air, central heating, two bedrooms...
You're alleging that they actually...
Yes, I did, sir.
Describe it as having a bathroom and air conditioning?
Right there, right, right there, heat, air, and then has, where's the restroom or the living area? It has bedrooms right there, too, right there.
Well, that's one small piece of a lot of...
Commissioner Almison?
I do have a question. Is your subject property, I can't see this very well, in Hickman?
Correct.
Okay, but they used comps from Bennett?
Correct, both the comps.
Okay, thank you.
Because they, the reason on that, they said to me is that valuations in Lincoln tend to be higher than rural areas. So, they did the town of Bennett, and I asked them, I said, why can't you do a comp with another house in Hickman? And also, I, I just can't get an answer on why a vacant lot would have central air, central heating, two bedrooms, and a bathroom. It just seems kind of ridiculous.
And it may have been a clerical error.
It's not a clerical error, and on top of that, the one comp-
Then the property owner that owns this property would have an issue that they could bring forward.
And on top of that, the parcel-
You haven't heard from them, so I don't know.
Okay, on top of that, sir, the parcel ID did not show up in the computer for the county clerk or the county assessor's office. There was no such thing. No parcel ID number on one of the comps. And that's why I was wondering why they don't have tools for the referee to actually describe this and have it in their system, so you can explain it to them.
What you're showing right now, the calculations are done by the assessor's office.
Correct, sir.
And so, the, the information that you bring forward, I mean, would be-
It's by the assessor.
Be an alternative value that you would be proposing. And so, that's what the referee process is for.
But I still have not gotten an answer on how a vacant lot can have central air, central heating, two bedrooms, and a bath, and a restroom. I, I'd like somebody to explain that to me.
We can follow up with the county assessor's office.
They can't explain it to me either. I went there, and the county clerk, both. And this is in black and white. This is from the county assessor's office.
Oh, Commissioner Avery?
This is one of your comparables, right?
No, I have, comp one is eight-one-five Garden Street Bennett, Nebraska. Comp two is eight-one-five Garden Street Bennett, Nebraska. Two addresses, as two separate comps. And the other one is six-twenty Tyler Street Bennett, Nebraska. The third comp is separate. And they explained to me, like I say again, that the property was subdivided, and the house remained on, the property and house remained on one lot, and it was subdivided to a vacant lot on the other property. And I, I just have not gotten an answer on how a vacant lot can have central air, central heating, two bedrooms-
You're alleging that they actually-
Yes, I did, sir.
Describe it as having a bathroom and air conditioning?
Right there, right. Right there, heat, air, and then has, where's the rest, or the living area? It has bedrooms right there, too. Right there.
Well, that's one small piece of a lot of things that go into determining evaluation.
It's, it's property that was subdivided. One had the lot and a house on it. The other one just have a lot. And what I'm trying to understand is how a vacant lot can have a bathroom and two bedrooms and central air and central heating.
Are you alleging that this prejudiced the outcome of your evaluation?
Yeah, it's no change. And I just, I can't get an answer from anybody on this. That's why I came to the board.
Right again, but at this point, your remedy, and you mentioned it, is going to Turk. I mean, that, that's your remedy. That's what the process is.
But can you explain how this happened?
Commissioner Brinkman?
I think the answer is no. Right today, we can't answer that question. And we're having this hearing today to get testimony from constituents about frustrations or things within the process, and you've brought one up, which is that you feel like you were not given an adequate answer to deter, to use this comparable in determining your value. And those are the kinds of issues that we wanted to hear from at this hearing. We wanted to obtain, so that then we can look at those issues and see if we see that has occurred in many different areas, so that we can try to fix the process going forward. But unfortunately, we can't answer the question, why was this used? Or how was it determined? Because we aren't the assessor's office. But you coming here and explaining that frustration and that issue will be helpful to us as we examine how to improve the process going forward.
Is that because all you folks don't know either?
And again-
A vacant property could have bathrooms and-
The appropriate person to address that question would be the county assessor.
I have, sir, I have.
What, what was the response?
They, they just looked at me like, that's perfectly normal.
Commissioner Almison?
I would like to say that I do appreciate, that I think that we all appreciate you bringing this forward. It is a situation, it is a problem, and I tell you what, knowing that that is a problem, we will have to address it ourselves at a later time. But we can't answer that question right now, because we don't have the materials, nor can we answer it. So, but we do appreciate your-
Have the materials right there. You're welcome to have the one if you'd like. And also, why would the county assessor go to the extent of printing out comps on something that is ridiculous like that?
Again, we'll take that under advisement and go forward.
Nobody can answer that question, is that what I'm getting?
Not, none of the commissioners can. Again, the county assessor's office, we need to provide that explanation.
Well, okay, if that's the case, and I have two lots on my property, and one, one of the lots has the house I own on it, and I'd like to show you the other lot with central air and central heating, two bedrooms and a bathroom. It's a vacant lot. Would you like to buy it?
Thank you. Have a good evening.
I'm sorry, you're buying one.
But you saw that, it's, I'm not making this up, sir. I wish I was, but I'm not.
And again, I would refer you to the county assessor's office.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the next name.
Next is Carla Walbaum. Do you solemnly swear from the testimony about to give us the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good afternoon. I want to thank you for giving us taxpayers the time and the venue to share some feedback with you about the 2017 property tax protest process. My name is Carla Walbaum. I'm a licensed realtor in the state of Nebraska with about fifteen years of experience. I did not protest my own taxes. I did assist some friends and some clients with their protests. This gave me the opportunity to observe the process without actually having any skin in the game myself. On Tuesday, August eighth of this year, taxpayers heard the same four words over and over. "We recommend no change." Just like he mentioned, "no change." That was the reply to nearly every taxpayer's request for review of their assessed property value. The result was the same whether the taxpayer provided an appraisal, pictures of deteriorating homes, crumbling foundation walls, bids for severe structural issues, or information about comparable homes in their neighborhood. As I watched each protest, I became more and more embarrassed. I was embarrassed for our county and their lack of response to taxpayer protests. Let me explain. Taxpayer number one, in response, sorry. Sorry, I'm trying to do it off my phone. So, taxpayer number one, in response to the taxpayer that purchased her home last year and provided an appraisal showing the market value just a couple thousand dollars less than the assessed value, the response was, maybe that's what the value was in July of 2016, but this assessment is based on what the value of the property was on January first. Are you saying that your value did not increase three thousand dollars in those six months? Those were the exact words that Mr., is it Wilken?
It's Wilchin.
Wilchin. Those were the exact words that Commissioner Wilchin asked the taxpayer. Are you telling me that your property did not increase in value three thousand dollars? From the time that she purchased it in July to the time that the assessment was supposed to be based, January first of 2017? Well, here, sir, I don't know, commissioners, I don't know, she doesn't know. Maybe it did increase. But either way, the taxpayer isn't supplying written documentation from an expert. Actually, she is supplying written documentation from an expert, as suggested that she supply, that now has been completely dismissed because it's dated June twenty-eighth instead of January first. However, every comparable sale used by the county assessor is for a sale prior to January first. In fact, for this particular property, the comparable sales used by the assessor are dated January 2016, July 2016, and September 2016. For some reason, what is good for the goose is not good for the gander. And while the county assessor may use sales from 2014, 2015, and 2016, the taxpayer may not. This situation calls to light that even when a taxpayer provides an appraisal, sorry, I keep touching it. Hang on. Even when a taxpayer provides an appraisal, pictures, oh, I'm sorry, that was the paragraph above. When a taxpayer provides an appraisal, as suggested by the county assessor's office, it's dismissed as not enough evidence in value regardless of the dollar amount. The denial of such a minimal adjustment shows the breadth of the problem that we have. In response to the taxpayers that asked, why did the referee at my formal protest tell me that he or she agreed with me and that there would be a, or there was a mistake and it would be corrected? Just like we heard the first speaker today say? Well, they were told to make people happy. I cannot remember his name, but I know that he was the gentleman that represented Great Plains Appraisal, and he's here today. The, his exact words were, they were told to make people happy. Thank you. Did I hear that right? Is that really what you just said? That referees were instructed to take information from taxpayer, taxpayers, smile, thank them, and send them on their way? Wonderful, what a sham of a process. Over thirty-six hundred county, Lancaster County taxpayers filed a formal protest this year, and I can only imagine how many of those people took time off from work, spent hours researching neighborhood homes, neighboring homes, obtaining bids for work that needs to be done to their home, only to have the same result that they would have had if they had done nothing. In response to the taxpayer whose assessed value increased nearly a hundred thousand dollars from two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand to three-hundred-and-eighty-five, Ms. Taxpayer, I see here that you paid three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars for the property in 2010, which means your assessed value has been too low, and you were not paying as much in taxes as you should have been. May I continue?
Please wrap it up, yeah.
And then a knowing look at the taxpayer like it's their fault that the assessed value in, assessed, that wouldn't be good, assessed value increased so dramatically. Yes, you, Ms. Taxpayer, this is your fault for getting such a great deal on your taxes all these years. How dare you protest this increase when you've been enjoying that great big discount since 2010? And that was the case over and over. Yes, Mr. and Mrs. Taxpayer, we understand that an increase of a hundred thousand, two-hundred thousand, but that, that's because you've not been assessed correctly in the past. And I watched taxpayer after taxpayer respond in awe. How do you reply when the person that appears to be representing the county assessor publicly insinuates that this is your fault? Now, some taxpayers would make a second attempt by presenting the assessed value of comparable homes in the neighborhood. And many homes were as close as on the same street from the taxpayer's home, only to be told that those are not actual sales, so they cannot be used as comparable homes. Which begs the question, if the assessed value is a hundred percent of market value, why can't the assessed value of a neighboring home be used to determine value? Well, I have an answer. Because that would lower the assessed value that we've determined your home is worth. And, wait for it, we recommend no change in value. Let me quickly share two more situations with you.
Carla, can you, I mean, we have a limit of five minutes, so let's be fair to the other participants.
Absolutely. In response to the taxpayer comparing, offering comparable sale information on similar homes and questioning how his home without a basement can be compared to two homes with walkout basements, our comparable sales trump yours. We recommend no change in value. In response to two taxpayers that have severe structural issues requiring thousands of dollars of repair work, yes, we see you have bids to get the work done, but that does not tell us how much we should reduce the assessed value of your home, so we're not going to reduce it at all. We recommend no change in value. And they did not say it, but you could hear it. You may now go sit down, quit wasting our time. And maybe that's the heart of the problem, time. The time that we all put into this process. From the people that gathered the information, to the people that input it into the mass appraisal system, to the people that disagreed with those results and naively thought that the protest process would provide some type of relief, to the representatives that persistently and successfully defended the results of the mass appraisal system with a no change in value recommendation. And that's right, the resounding, "we recommend no change in value" was unanimously approved by a four-to-zero vote of our Lancaster County Commissioners. Over two hundred taxpayers provided additional information that may or may not have been reviewed by the county commissioners. Rather than discussing the protest, the county commissioners made a blanket motion to accept the recommended changes of the, of the company that was hired to assess our homes. And the same company that issued the property assessments defended the assessments and recommended changes or no changes in value was, in fact, the entity that actually determined the final values. So, if any property owners in Lancaster County feel like the system is rigged, like they don't stand a chance, like it's a waste of time to protest property tax values, I understand why. The current system is inherently flawed, when the same representative for the county is the judge, the jury, and the executioner. So, in conclusion, I would recommend a change.
Well, with all that information, I guess, what would you, what would you change?
I don't think that the same person or the same entity that goes out-
Assessor?
No.
Has the initial phase of this process.
Right.
The referee has the second phase, and then, then the third phase is the Board of Equalization.
Okay, I worked with-
I'm sorry, Turk, but-
I, I worked with four different properties, and like I said, none of these were mine. And I went through every single-
Okay, Carla, really quick-
Yes, I thought you were asking me.
I know, but really, one point, you, you said earlier how there were no changes. There were a lot of changes that were made. There were. So, when you make a statement like that, that's inaccurate.
May I ask for that statistic? Out of the thirty-six hundred people who protested, could you tell me how many people had any kind of change?
We, I don't know off the top of my head, but we have that in the clerk's office.
Yeah, the clerk does maintain those records.
And that would be great. What I'm telling you is that when I sat here on August eighth and watched, almost every single person was told, no change in value. And the people who didn't come in person, I'm not sure that their files were even looked at by you. In fact, the files that I presented to you, I didn't really see anybody doing anything or reviewing it. It was, it was the representative from Great Plains who simply said he had reviewed it. Well, he's the one who gave the assessment. It's his, he signed off on every single one of those.
That, I mean, again, that, from your, that's your perspective, I, we all brought our personal computers in, and I was looking at, as we were going through them. And so, not only did I prepare before the meeting, I actually was working on it, and, and you knew that, because we engaged on that issue, because we asked several times for information about the properties, so we could look it up on the assessor's website. So, again, that, that statement is inaccurate, Carla.
What I saw, and what I'm trying to explain, is that when we asked a question, rather than it being answered by the commissioners, it was answered by Great Plains, regardless of what the question was. So, whether you were reviewing the material or not, I wasn't seeing any interaction from you.
Well, that's your perspective, I guess. So, we'll just have to disagree on that. But we appreciate you coming forward.
Absolutely. Do you have any other questions for me?
Questions for?
And I, I would be happy if you wanted to create a task force where you ask taxpayers to come in, and you ask local realtors, you ask people who specialize in the industry. I mean, saying to an elderly woman, apology, but do you know what your market value is? Of course she doesn't know what her market value is. I mean, that's, I'll excuse myself, but-
Have a good evening.
You, too.
Thanks. Mr. Clerk, please call the next person.
Next is Mary Mosher. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give us the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. I did prepare a written statement. I did not realize there'd be five of you, so there's three if anybody wants to keep that for communication.
The clerk will make it part of the public record.
Yeah, that's fine. Basically, today, I'm just going over the issues that I've had with the county assessor and the protests. I found that the county assessors don't come out and actually look at the farm property. I'm more with farm, not in town, so I'm more on the rural. And they don't look at the location of the comparables that they're using compared to where we live or our farm properties are. This example that I have first is not our property, but county assessor, many times, they have grassland and waste as farm ground. And the opposite, farm ground as grassland, even they supposedly drive by the property and inspect the property. Changes won't be made unless a protest is filed, and previous years, even though the assessor is wrong, can't get changed. I have a client that paid thousands of dollars that they shouldn't have even, through the assessor, even paid, even though the assessor continually was out to the property, actually have that property with me. So, they finally got it changed this year. They're elderly clients, they're in their nineties. The only reason that it was caught was because I do taxes for a living, and it got to be where their CRP income was less than what their taxes were. I'm like, something is wrong here. So, for all of these years, they've been paying on farm ground, and it's grass. So, they've finally gotten it changed. Their current value that they had to pay on last year was six-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. They paid ten-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars after they did the protest, which they had to do. They wouldn't just change it, because it was past the date. Their land is now valued at two-hundred and, or three-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars. The county assessor had been out in fourteen, eleven, ten, and eight to that property to look at the house, because it was an old, old house that was moved in. The facade was changed a bit, there was some brick put on it, so they kept thinking, oh, this is a very valuable home. So, they just kept, kept looking, but for some reason, they didn't look at the two-hundred-and-forty acres around it. So, there, number one is an issue we have. The assessor's data sheet is very difficult to understand, even for me. I am an accountant and tax preparer, and even the so-called, I guess she called grains plain, Great Plains certified appraiser, didn't totally understand how to read it. So, you're, the buildings, a lot of times, are put back on after they're taken off, and the house values are raised after they're lowered, even though nothing is done. Many farmers don't realize the appraised value on the protest sheet is already at seventy-five percent, not at a hundred percent. So, if they don't think it's worth protesting, well, yeah, I can get that for my ground. No, that's, you're getting a twenty-five percent break. You have to go back and look at it, and it's very, very difficult, because they have an adjusted rate. So, if you don't look at rate one, you don't have a clue what they're appraising your ground at. I mean, that's confusing to the, the common person. It should be made a whole lot simpler. And when it comes to the house value, I can't, and the assessor can't even answer what the value of the actual house is. When I went to the protest, he couldn't even tell me. He says, yeah, I think they have your house around four hundred grand. I said, it's twenty-seven years old. We built it for a hundred and eighty thousand. If that's right, we've got a real problem here. So, it, our house has multiple repairs. This is on our property, the previous year was the only year I've ever gained anything on the initial protest, because I showed pictures of flood damage, siding that was bad, roof that was bad, and they did knock our house down thirty thousand dollars. But, the next year, it went right back up. So, so, as you guys have said, the protest, protest at the event center isn't worth going to. You just do that to get to step to the Turk. You have to do that, that process. And don't ever be late, because if you're five days late, you're not going to get it in there. And I went there with appraisals, a current appraisal on farm ground, on our farm ground, recent purchases in our area of houses and lots, because they raised our lots. You guys know that you did that to us farmers. You raised our lots way up. Okay, almost done. Okay, almost done. And, um, also, uh, someone last year at the county assessor or the clerk's office took our appraisal to the appraisal board without our knowledge, and the appraisal board wouldn't tell us who or why. And I never did get that figured out, but they finally did say the appraisal was legitimate. These are just a few of my issues, and I'm getting tired of fighting the government on this issue and having our ground taxes raised from twenty dollars to a hundred dollars an acre in just a few years. Valuing our ground and what it can sell for is not fair to the farmer, trying to make a living or a young family trying to make a living. Keep in mind, when corn and beans was high, speculators bought the ground, and they bought it at a high price. Farmers didn't have that commodity to sell. We didn't make that money. So, that's why the prices went so high on our farm ground. Now corn's three dollars or less, and we can't even hardly pay the taxes on them. My son told me yesterday he hadn't paid as yet. He can't afford to. He has to wait till he has a few beans brought in, so. So anyway, just some things that I'd like to bring up, I think there's wrong in the process. We've been to Turk, and we've got things changed there. Thank goodness, Turk does actually listen to us and look at our appraisals and our comparables. So.
Any, any questions? I appreciate, th- this is not the first time I've heard about the CRP issue, which is because the system's changed, and that information used to be readily available. Um, it's no longer, um, for whatever reason, USDA doesn't share that information the way they used to.
But you can drive by and see it.
I know, but it's-
You gotta have blinders on not to see that's grass out there for fifteen years.
Right, but, yeah, and I, yeah, and your, your point is well-taken.
So, if you're gonna go look at the house, then you should be looking twenty steps away at what is right next to it.
Well, well, your point is well-taken.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it, it, it's very frustrating, but yeah, we'll be in Turk, they've got two of them there now, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next is Alan Wellman.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, you're about to give is a truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I live at eighty-eight oh-one Holdridge Street. I own and live at eighty-eight oh-one Holdridge Street. It is by FSA, the Farm Service Agency, a farm. I am a hay farmer. I hay all of the ground that I live on. I, I went, I, I'm gonna speak basically about my situation compared to just my neighborhood. I wanna, I, I think the assessor has not taken into consideration the fact that, uh, there's going to be a sixty-inch water line that goes across my property that hooks up to the water tower in the east side of town. And so, uh, I planted seven-hundred trees, little bitty trees like this on my property when I bought it in the late eighties, and they're gonna take every tree between here and there, and it's, it's progress, it's for the good of the city, I understand, but it is, does impact my property. It does impact my property and what I consider to be the value of it. On the east side of my property, I have an LAS power line with a steel tower and whatever, and, and the people in the real estate business tells me that that impacts your property too. They're going to widen Holdridge somewhere along the line here. We are building houses as fast as you can hardly build them in the Waterford Estate area, and we will widen Holdridge. And, and that will also create some issues for my property. And I would mention, my property is thirty-five point three-one acres, thirty-five point three-one acres. And, and as I said, it is considered a farm. I actually draw a little subsidy because I don't plant corn or I don't plant any soybeans on my farm. It's strictly grass that I, broom and a little alfalfa in it that I make for hay. The F, the, and I have a farm number, thirty-three forty-one FSA. Its hay ground is twenty-seven point five acres of this. About seven or eight acres of it is wasteland. It's either existing trees or trees that have been built or that have been planted by me on the acre. And yet, the county assessor, he, he says that I have four point nine acres as home site, and, and we're, we're in trees, the church next to me has a water source heat pump. It, it runs water across my property, which it can legally do because it is a, a natural water line into my pond, which then runs around, and that's all. And even if you, even if you look at the, at the map that the government puts out, they show one acre of-
If you want to put it on the overhead.
One acre of, of grassland over there that's considered to be part of my home site. And so I, uh, the value of my home site then, you know, becomes somewhat of an issue, somewhat of an issue. And just, just, I mean, an attempt on my part to try to lobby for my use of the property versus what someone else might consider. I have no city sewer. I have a septic system. I have no city water. I have a well. And at this time, my property is not in the city of Lincoln, Nebraska. Now, there's an annexation process going on, and my property is now included in the annexation property that it, process that's gonna be taking place. So, um, I, I wanna get to a couple other things. There are numerous articles available from supposedly established people that farmland prices in Nebraska have gone down every year from two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. But yet, the property, my property, uh, the value of the land went up, and it is farmland, as far as I'm concerned. Now, there, there is other arguments about what that land can be used for, but at this time, it's my home and it's farmland. I would just mention a couple other things. The house was built, I built a house in nineteen ninety-four. There've been no remodels, no structural changes, no updates to this house from original build in nineteen ninety-four. The only couple of things that have happened is had to replace a, a double oven, or I had a, a heat pump go out, but structurally, everything is exactly the same. I, my property is adjourned, is touched by several acreages in what's called the Sunrise Estates Hub Hall Edition. It goes on my east side and my south side. Uh, I got two, four, six, eight properties that touch me, actually touched me on the east and on the south, and a couple, three of them have been sold in the last two or three or four years, so there are some market value prices or some at least sale prices that are available. Eighty-nine hundred Holdridge, uh, assessed valuation went up three point six percent. Ninety, forty Holdridge went up five point one percent. Forty-one oh Linwood, which touches me, their valuation went down sixteen point one percent. Ninety-three forty Dwayne Lane, which touched me, valuation went down point seven percent. Ninety-three oh one Dwayne Lane, valuation went down fourteen point three percent. Ten forty North Ninety-second, it went up fourteen point three percent. One oh one North Ninety-second went up nine point nine percent. And one thousand North Eighty-eight went up eight point six percent. My property went up twenty-three point two percent. I, I think there's some, uh, one other issue that I would at least mention about the process of comps. Two of the comps that are used against my property are nearby. I, I believe that there's some reason to believe that property on the north side of O Street is somewhat treated a little bit differently for whatever the reason is, and two of these properties are fairly nearby in my neighborhood, and I respect the right that they could be used as comps. But then we used a comp that was eighty-eight oh-one South Sixty-Fifth Street, which makes, makes no sense to me in terms of, uh, a, a reasonable way to compare properties, compare I'm, I'm, I've talked to the assessor a time or two about these issues, and, and I'm hoping that the process of evaluating my process, my property, is based on what I'm using the property for, what I'm doing. I live on this property, it's my home, and, and I've owned the property for over thirty-some years, and I'd like to live there a little while longer, but it's, uh, the process of change and evaluation, and then, of course, the impending annexation are going to make it a little more expensive to live on this property. Any questions about anything that I've said?
I just have a couple. I'm assuming you're in, you have green belt status?
I have what?
Are, have you applied for a green belt status?
I believe I have green belt status.
Probably, okay, yeah, you, you, yeah. It would be very advantageous if you haven't, but, um, the, those examples you gave, are they all zoned or classified the same properties? Are they all ag residential? Or they ag? I mean, what is your property zoned at? Do you know?
You're asking for someone to make, I'm an old man, I can't remember everything-
Sorry.
But I believe that-
There's different classifications.
I believe the comprehensive plan has that property zoned as R1 residential.
Okay, so, and then, okay, but-
But it's, it, it, it's a farm as far as FSA is concerned.
Still farmland.
I use it as a farm, and I, and if any of you'd like to, if any of you need some hay, small square bales, I have hay for sale that I actually baled on my property.
And I think that's a good point, because, yeah, there's several properties throughout the county that are being annexed because of the comprehensive plan, and that's the city's, you know, possibility, but-
Well, I'm being, I would say I'm being annexed, the church next to me and these properties that touch me are all in the parcel that's under, that's being proposed to be annexed. Um, the, the, the properties around me are like three to four acres. They're all acreages, they're all acreages, and every one of them has a house on it. And I believe if somebody went back with knowledge, they were sold on the idea that there was two building envelopes on each one of these properties. Now, nobody's done anything like that, and I don't think anybody that lives there intend to. And a couple, three of them have sold recently. I mean, I got the information here in terms, the one that touches me right along Holdridge, you know, I can tell you what it, I tell you what it's valued at, and I could tell you what it was sold at, and, you know, the valuation went down. I mean, it's less than what they paid for it. And so I'm just hoping for, you know, the whole issue of, I went to the referee, nothing happened. Uh, I discussed it with the assessor's office, nothing happened, and, uh, and they tell me why, and I want them to try and understand that I'm, uh, it's my home, and I'm a little farmer, and I'm not a developer. But it would appear like the process is gonna force me, you know, off of my property.
Did, did you appeal to Turk, the tax equalization review commission?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so you'll, you'll have a case.
But they, but they, uh, they told, they told me that it might be next year-
Right.
Before I ever have an opportunity to present. It's just my case, right? I, I understand that my property and where I'm at is, is atypical. It's atypical. But, uh, I'm, I'm not building houses on it, you know? And I'll make, I'll try to make a joke. I'm a, I'm an old farm boy. Some people have told me, "I made the most money farming, planting houses." And right now, I'm a hay farmer. So-
Any other questions?
I appreciate, appreciate your attention, I appreciate your time, and-
We appreciate you coming in tonight.
And I'm hoping that all of the information that I provided to you is supported by the facts that that's the way it is, you know, in terms of the percentage changes and whatever.
Well, we have no, we have no reason to doubt you, sir. So thank you. Mr. Clerk, next.
Um, there's nobody else signed in. Mr. Gary Crisman did, uh, drop off some written comments.
Okay. Anyone else in the, in the audience? Okay, hearing none. I will go ahead and close the public hearing.
I move adjourn. Second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you all for coming, and have a good evening.